Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Stoughton School Committee meeting. Today is June 28, 2022. This is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the duty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. Don't know who signed up. So we have Kathleen Fiddler from 37 East Vanstone Road regarding homework policy. So yeah, we have three minutes for comments. And you can just push the button that says push, and if it's green, it's on, hopefully.
Okay. Is that good? All right. Yeah, so thank you. As you said, my name is Kathleen Fiddler. I'm a resident of Stoughton and want to make a comment about the new homework policy. And I wanted to start by saying I know that obviously you have all of our kids' best interests at heart, and you give freely of your time. You're not being paid for this, so for that, I thank you. But I'm really concerned about the homework policy. And in full disclosure, I am a math teacher at the high school, but I'm also a proud graduate of the class of 1990. And I'm the parent of a student at the O'Donnell Middle School and a student coming up to the high school next year. So my concerns are that my children and all the children of Stoughton have just had their standards for academic learning and performance lowered drastically. In addition to the banning of homework, excuse me, on the weekends and over vacation, the policy suggests that 10 minutes per night per subject is appropriate through the 12th grade and that there is no distinction between the middle school students and the high school students, and I disagree. More important than retaining the content is the learning of discipline and perseverance, and 10 minutes is simply not enough for either. I'm not alone in my feelings. I've reached out to parents I personally know in the community, and several are concerned. However, some are in agreement with parts of the policy and disagree with some of my opinions. And all of that is to say that I don't think a few casual conversations qualify me to create a homework policy. My concern is that the policy was created without any input from the stakeholders. I don't remember seeing a parent survey. Forgive me, I'm extremely nervous. Where were the student surveys? Where's the transparent sharing of the research and best practices that led to supporting this policy? I've not heard about them. Perhaps some of the surveys would find that our homework practices are outdated. As an alum of SPS, I can tell you lots of things haven't changed in a long time. Early Thursdays have been around since at least 1977, and perhaps some things should be changed. So, you know, I just, I urge you to reconsider and go back and do this the right way. I urge you to get input from everybody in the town. I have no doubt that there are some things outdated, but I think you should at least engage the stakeholders in a discussion about the philosophy and the goals of homework. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had someone else sign up, but they must have left, so I don't see. So, okay, so I will. There's no one in the hall, right? Another person? Just in case you can double check.
Nope.
No? Okay. Okay. So it's superintendent's update. That's you, Dr. Rab. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to make sure whoever it was, if they were here.
No, thank you. I just have four quick things for the committee. The first is we had our security meeting on June 6th in the wake of the tragic events in Uvalde, just to remind parents of what our security protocols were. We had 35 parents attend and 15 staff, so we had 50 people at the meeting and were able to review. We had the police chief, assistant deputy chief was there as well, as well as our school resource officer, and it gave parents an opportunity to ask questions in a more quiet setting. We also held lockdown drills in all of our schools during the last week and a half of school. And, you know, while it was the last week and a half in school, it gave all of the students a chance to remind themselves of what the lockdown drills were, and we will certainly be continuing those in the fall and making sure that we stay current and we stay with our muscle memory for lockdown drills. At the same time, we used it as an opportunity to collect data. So our director of maintenance and operations and our technology director attended the lockdown drills and collected data from all the teachers about what was working and what wasn't so that we can make any necessary repairs over the summer or fixes over the summer to make sure everything is up to snuff. So I was very happy about that. It was, it was the end of the school year. It's a hectic time, but it was a necessary thing to do. At the same time, at the end of the year, we brought back all of our concerts and art shows, and that was wonderful, from Mamma Mia Musical at the high school in April all the way through kindergarten through 12th grade. For our second graders, this was the first time they'd ever been to a concert, believe it or not, because of COVID. So it was wonderful to see. I was able to go to a couple of those, and to see the smiles on the parents' faces and the smiles on the kids' faces to be able to perform at the end of the school year was fantastic. Our central registration office is going to open next week. We're real excited about that. The exact date to be determined, we're just putting the finishing touches on the room, trying to get it put together, but we're real excited to get our central registration office up and off the ground. And so we're real excited about that. And then, starting Tuesday, we start our summer program. So we've been out for about a week, and we have-
I'm sorry, what program? You're going so fast.
I'm sorry.
What was the program?
The summer program.
Summer, sorry. I was writing.
There's three summer programs that we do. One is the Nights of Summer. We currently have 800 students enrolled in our Nights of Summer program. And then we also have our Extended School Year Special Education Program, and then the Summer School, the, you know, OMS and HSS Summer School for students who need to catch up and for credit recovery. Between those three programs, we have over 1,000 students enrolled coming back on July 5th, which is wonderful. So I would venture to say just a little less than a third of our student population will be back with us next week with all sorts of opportunities over the summer. So it's exciting, and it starts up on Tuesday, so.
Have we talked about having like a summer camp program? Like, I know that we have these programs, we have Nights of Summer, but it's very academic-y. Have we ever talked about, like, having, like, some type, like, on our campus, one of our campuses, or something like an actual camp for students that we're able to provide that type of environment, or is that something-
We haven't yet, but it's something we can look at for next summer. I think one of the things we're trying to do is look at camp experiences, but also look at athletic experiences during the school year and working with the new AD to see what might be out there for opportunities for our students, for clinics and camps that way, too.
You know, I think that's great. I think, I know that watching the budgeting at the state level and the additional Chapter 70 funding that's coming into the schools based on the correction in the calculation due to our low-income populations, that maybe is potential, too, looking at what's, like, just actual summer camp type thing at an elementary. I know that the town offers it and they charge. What if we had it and we didn't? And we have that type of summer camp that we're able to offer out of our elementary schools, you know, as a option.
Great, thank you.
But fun, not like, the Nights of Summer is a good one to propel learning and all that, which is wonderful, but a, like, a different type.
No, thank you. That was it. So I just, those four things I just wanted to mention, just as we wrap up the school year.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Rab? Thank you, Dr. Rab. The next item that we have is we have Melmark New England, which we received a letter. It's in our packets from Melmark. It's, okay. Should I read it?
No.
All right. Good, because, yeah, this is long. So we have Elena McGuire from Melmark New England, who has brought forward an opportunity and would like for the school committee to consider its approval.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me here today. So my name's Helen McGuire. I'm the executive director of Melmark New England, and Melmark New England is a Chapter 766-approved private special education school. We're licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We specialize in serving students as young as three until the day they turn 22, when they age out of special educational services and enter into adult services. Typically, the students we serve, they require a really intensive, individualized special education program that focuses on a behavioral approach coupled with very individualized educational instruction. And so what we do is really design an environment, an educational environment, that can be flexible and adapting to their learning style while also addressing what is really the most severe behavioral challenges that we see. For most of our students that we serve, they've had some failed placements in the past. We're typically known and have been labeled in the past as kind of the school of last resort. Some of our students, especially over the last couple of years, have had no access to an educational placement and actually have been on emergency rooms where they've been boarding for a while in search of placement. They have not been successful in their general education environment due to the severity of the behavior profile, primarily aggression, self-injurious behavior, property destruction, elopement. So we, we are known to really specialize in that severe profile of behavior disorders, but also well-known for individualizing instruction that actually what we see is progression in their individualized IEP programs in a fairly short amount of time. What we do is, we do provide a day school and a residential school as well. So what that means is, in our current location in Andover and Lawrence, we have about a total of 140 students, and they have a primary diagnosis of autism in addition to other intellectual or developmental disabilities. However, the primary reason is their severe behavior disorders. Of the mo, of that, about 140 students, about 50 of them are residential with us as well, meaning they then, outside of their school day, move into continued learning in a residential environment that basically provides 24/7 access to education. So they live in a group home setting with about six or seven other peers, and it's a very staff-intensive ratio at all waking hours. The staff ratio in the school program is typically one teacher to every two children, unless a child really has significant behavioral challenges, and then if they do require additional one-to-one services, that will be reviewed during the IEP process. The, the school, the way the school runs, it's Monday through Friday. It's a six-and-a-half-hour school day. Every classroom has about six kids in it, and the classrooms are supervised and instruction provided by a primary special education teacher who's master's level and licensed in severe disabilities at all levels. In turn, that teacher supervises what we call a bachelor's-level ABA counselor, an applied behavior analysis counselor, who I think in different settings you might call a paraprofessional, but essentially they're all bachelor's level, might be holding a credential as a registered behavior technician as well, and work under the supervision of that licensed special education teacher to deliver the IEP program as planned, you know, obviously also to support the child if they're having any difficulty throughout the school day. So that's just a little background. I don't, don't know if you have any specific questions about who we are and what we serve. We actually started in 1998 in a very modest, I call it the shoebox, located in Woburn, Mass. And what was supposed to be a census of 50 students in, for, across three years, we were really at 50 students in year one. That, that was just a significant signal to us what need there was for expanding our services. We relocated finally when we found our property in Andover. We relocated after eight years in the Woburn site. In 2015, we located a second day school only in our Lawrence program, in our Lawrence site, partly because, again, if you, Lawrence is a large city, and they really had some need for us to address a very specialized population that they couldn't. So we located in Lawrence, and we were, we had a very successful day school running there as well. As you know, the pandemic changed everything, and so, fast forward, we were very limited in being able to take in any new admissions during the period of the pandemic, although we were 100% operational. Face-to-face services were still being delivered. However, we weren't able to do any new admissions during that time. Now we're able to do new admissions, and what we realize is our school capacity is full in Andover and Lawrence, and the referrals we are getting are referrals that are within, over the hour span to Andover and not really a feasible drive. Just in the South Shore area alone down here, we have had about 250 referrals for children in need of our type of specialty program from local towns and cities in the South Shore area. So that was part of our train of thought, was to start a second, another day school in this particular area because it seems to be kind of a centralized area to a lot of those referring towns and would obviously decrease the transportation time involved, which in turn reduces expense for any referring towns or district, you know. So our, the process in order to locate the school, we found some property in, on Technology Center Drive, and it has a great footprint. It's basically, it needs full renovation and customization, but it allows us the footprint for the number of students we'd like to serve, and it would be a day school as well. So what that means is we wouldn't be admitting students who require residential services, at least not, that's not our initial priority. Our initial priority is the day students that seem to have a greater need right now. It, the footprint allows for ease of buses, vans, and the safety around transportation that's required. We also are aware that there's not really any neighbors that we would be in conflict with or businesses in terms of, you know, the students that might be having difficulties coming in and off buses in the morning or the afternoon. I think it would be well safeguarded for them. So part of the process for this, this additional school program requires us to submit a Form 1 to the Department of Education, and one of the requirements in order for them to approve the final project is that the town in which we're looking to locate in, that the school committee is able to provide approval for that project, that you see the merits of it and the, and the need, and you're able to agree that that's a good project to move forward with. And that, that's really the purpose behind today's meeting, was to really educate, you know, the group, answer questions about who we are and what we do. I do have some material I'm glad to leave as well before I go, but essentially, really to describe the type of program that we will be looking to operate there, the capacity. It is a six-and-a-half-hour day, year-round school, and so we don't have summers off. What we do have is, we do observe the April school, the traditional April vacation week, the week of 4th of July. We're actually, I think, all a little excited for the upcoming week, that's coming, kids included, and then Christmas week, and that's really it. The kids do require that intensive level of, of a schedule, school schedule, so that they avoid regression in learning, and we continue to optimize the really very individualized curriculum. It's really customized curriculum for that we optimize their success rate across meeting a lot of their goals, both academic, life, life skills as well, and I would definitely say social gains, which is, is a deficit. About 80% of our student population is nonverbal, so we do spend a significant amount of time working directly with them, with speech and language pathologists, using augmentative communication devices, enabling them to have communication systems in general. The school educational team, aside from the teachers in each classroom and our ABA therapies, we also have speech and language pathologists, occupational therapy, physical therapists, nurses are on staff, and we also have board-certified behavior analysts who work with the team to develop individualized behavior plans along with the educational plans as well.
So what we'll do is, we can just go, we can start down this end. If you have any questions, we can each ask a question, keep it going.
The question I had is whether your primary students were solely based on referrals or whether applicants as well through the parents, and what's your selection process?
Yeah, so typically, the way the referrals do occur is in concert with the district, the referring district. That's how the referral gets made. It's not to say that parents don't reach out to inquire who we are, whether or not their child might be appropriate, but we really do work with the parents to let them know that this really has to be a team process with their district, partly because that, it's the district that will ultimately be responsible for that child's IEP progress and outcome. So we will tour parents and talk to them, but we are really working with that district to make sure it's an appropriate place, a referral for placement.
We'd fund it if, yeah.
Yeah. And in terms of then, the selection process, and I think this is, if we could open up a school in multiple locations, we would, but that, that's the hard part. Every child that I come in contact with or see, I want. But typically, what we're looking for is, there's very specific openings in classrooms by age, profile, and really peer match. And so we are looking to make sure that we can have the, we can select children that will best match in that particular opening at that time, you know. The way openings happen over time is through children either transitioning back to their local public school districts, which we, we work on that about 10 students a year at least. We're working on going back to their, to what we call a less restrictive setting, or, but typically, it's working with the districts to build the infrastructure to continue the success that they're working on. Or they graduate at 22, and that's how those openings occur.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you had a ballpark figure about how many students you're expecting to enroll at this new school?
Yeah, just based on initial renderings of the property, I think we'll probably be able to serve somewhere between 80 to 85 day students.
Hi.
Hi.
What towns do you service today? Like, do you have any students from Stoughton that, that, like, what's the population?
Yeah, no, not currently. We actually did have a child from Stoughton about, I think, 10 years ago. Canton as well, Sharon, Mansfield, Quincy. We actually do have a child coming up from Quincy. We, let me see, I also have a-
Did you look in those towns, or was Stoughton the only town you looked in to-
Yeah, we, we tried looking at those towns either for, you know, kind of that, that bullet, as we call it, that bull's eye. We also had to take in the, in terms of the cost of, you know, what was avail, and what was available for leasing at that side.
So did you contact any of those towns for this opportunity as well? Has anybody said yes or, well, no, obviously?
No, we didn't reach out to other towns, partly because we first, it first had to be really driven by the feasibility of property being available and the cost, and Stoughton really kind of fit all of that criteria that we were looking at.
And you said that it would be a day school, but you had said to begin with, that would be your thoughts, so-
Yeah, our intention right now is a day school, and this is, you know, kind of what happens over time. Over time, there might be, there might be referrals, whether they come from Stoughton or surrounding towns where kids are going to require a more intensive service model. And so sometimes we do get approached by towns to consider doing, to consider that child in residential placement. We're not, we're not necessarily, you know, looking to do residential, partly because the location and where our actual, you know, clinical resources are for 24/7 care, it's a bit of a distance there, and you'd have to really build a very strong infrastructure to support that.
So in Andover, it's day and residential, correct? It's both?
Right. There's a, there's a school, and then the resident, residences are off-campus, you know, in the community. They're all community-based residences.
Did it open as both, or did it eventually get to the residential piece?
It, for a short period of time, was day and then moved right quickly into residential because of the requests, and that was really just as we were starting out. So it was feasible, it was slow, it was controlled, but it's, it's definitely a location issue for us around having the right resources available with 24/7 models.
Katie?
I actually don't have that many questions. I do appreciate looking for you, for looking on the South Shore, because I know that the, trying to get to the North Shore, from the South Shore, is horrible traffic, and for children that have the needs for that, I'm sure it's not, you try to get hesitant, because I do. So I just, I think it's a, it's a good program.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I feel like you provided a lot of really helpful information. I had a similar question to Sandra about the residential program, if it's like a possibility down the road, which you really addressed, so I appreciate that. Was wondering if you do go from being day school to residential, does the same process have to happen where you come to the school committee for approval, or?
No, not, not necessarily. That would then be a process if we were to entertain it, and, yeah, I don't, you know, I'm just gonna be transparent, we're not looking to do that.
Yeah, just typistically.
It would just be, we would have to work with the Department of Education directly with the licensing that we're required to then do.
Okay. Thank you. And was also wondering, how would you compare the services that you're providing to, like, the special education collaborative? Can you just kind of help me understand, like, how those sort of compare in terms of services?
We do get students who typically might go from, you know, their local school to then a more collaborative setting, and then they're ultimately still referred to Melmark. It's all about the intensity of services that they need in the specialty services, and so we are in a, we are a special education school that use applied, applied behavior analysis, so it's a very specific methodology. And so if children have that written into their IEP, that they need ABA, they need a small classroom, they need a high ratio, those are typically how students out of, will come from a collaborative into our setting.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any additional questions?
No.
So what would be the age range that you'd be seeing in Stoughton based on what you have for South Shore applicants today?
So it could be 3 to 22. The average age we're seeing?
The average that you have for South Shore now?
Yeah, we're seeing eight years old.
Eight?
Eight, between eight and 15. That's the age range we're seeing has a very severe need right now. You know, some of, and some of that we've seen with our current student population, you know, there's, there's development occurring, there's, you know, hormonal changes that are occurring. So what we are seeing is that there's typically an increase in the behavioral profile and then the educational needs that correspond to that. So it's a very, pretty consistent age range we're seeing.
And in the town that approved it, you put a letter in here, I think it was the town of, city of Lawrence?
Lawrence, yeah.
The process they had when you presented, did they collaborate with anybody within the town to talk about the impact to the town by opening this? Like, I don't know, Dr. Rab, if you did research in terms of, from the schools, Stoughton schools' perspective, what would be the, be the impact to us? Do we have any added district placements right now with these needs that we send away?
We do. Among the added district placements, we certainly have students with these needs, and they have to go further away. And so the, there's two advantages to a program in Stoughton. One is the students can stay in their home community even though they're at a different school. There's also savings on transportation, because transportation is an expensive component of all of the added district placements, and if we can bring them to a much closer place, the transportation costs are that much less.
That would be the family would have to approve that transfer, too. It wouldn't be, we'd just move them, right?
Absolutely.
Because they should have the option to stay. I mean, I think it's great to offer as much as you can for students. I don't think that this is a negative thing. I've just never done it. Have you had to approve something like this before in the district? No.
I don't think that Stoughton has ever had, and no one has come in for this, so.
So you haven't had, when you had the older populations within the district in Andover, because it's residential, do you ever have any issues in terms of the community with any, because you say it's, there's aggression, property destruction, so-
Right.
And I'm asking because if we don't ask, it wouldn't be the right thing to ask.
Oh, absolutely. No, and that, and that's the thing, it's very well-supervised. Staff are pretty skilled. They undergo a, I mean, every week, they're undergoing different skills training. It's a very intensive development program that we have for staff. So the kids are pretty safe, but supervised in a safe way, and we build contingencies into their day that really does help motivate them to want to be out in the community and have safe behavior and be a part of that community. So they actually do- So, they actually do find it really reinforcing to stay safe in the community. But the, what we will see for behavior challenges are typically directed towards staff, because staff are, you know, at the end of the day, ensuring that they're active, staying involved in their schedule, completing, you know, the work that they need to do. So, that is usually who will be, you know, the target. We do intensive level of training as well with families for the day students especially that we serve. We believe that the skills they're learning in school has to be generalized into the home setting for them to continue to be successful. Our ultimate goal for every family is that no child stays with us. That's actually, we, we tell them that's our mission right out of the gate, that their child may, may be placed with us, but we're going to be working, whether it's two years, three years, five years, some kids it could be a little longer, we're working that they will return back to their home setting, you know, their community school setting. And so, in order to do that, we do have to work intensively with the families. And so, we spend about anywhere from an hour a week to sometimes a few, quite a few hours a month, meeting with families, going over the protocols that are effective with the children, and then going into their home, provided they allow us to really customize their home life, so that they can work, not work, but that they can really parent and feel like a family unit for a child that really has some pretty significant needs. The families we have worked with that have changed their entire life for this child, but they're pretty much homebound and afraid to go out and go out in the community, and the logistics of life are hard for them. So, we do pride ourselves on having a very strong family training and family service component, so we can reunify that family in a way that's really functional for everybody, siblings included.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. When do you need, oh.
I just had a question about, how many employees do you anticipate, and are you planning to bring staff here, or are you planning to hire, you know, local from the South Shore?
Both. So, when we, when we do any new development, we do try to take some seasoned folks already, at least for six months to a year, in order to develop that program exactly the way it needs to be done, well-run, with experienced knowledgeable staff. Simultaneous to that, we'll be bringing in new staff, they'll be going through their own intensive training program as well. And that's been pretty successful, you know? So, I would, I would say probably about 80% of the staff will be from the local area. And, and we currently have staff who travel, believe it or not, from this area to Andover, so I'm sure they'll be the first signing up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when you, when, I read that you were looking to break ground in August, but we're, we need to obviously discuss, I don't know if it's something, you're familiar with more these type of, like, I don't know if you recommend that we speak to anybody in the town on how that changes the infrastructure within the town and bringing that? Would we speak to the police chief just to talk about, do they know of any other towns or anything, how? I don't know, like.
We haven't, so, no.
So, you haven't reached out to anybody?
No.
I don't know. I didn't look, I didn't research, I figured you would get a research, I didn't look into what the other buildings or, like, the other properties are, what they're like, or the history. I didn't look, because you just don't know, I don't know if you bring a new program.
I mean, of the Andover and Lawrence location, the type of property, or?
Yeah, like, when you talked about, I guess my thing is, I'm going back to that piece of it expands. You said that it's off-site, it's, it's different properties and housing folks in different properties. So, would that be purchasing homes in neighborhoods, or would that be?
Right.
Yeah.
So, the way, if a child needed 24/7 or residential services, it's, it's typically your typical home. It'd be, we're in average neighborhoods, we, we are next door neighbors to, you know, older families, families with younger kids as well, retirees. So, when we are looking for residential property, we are looking to be integrated into the community. We believe they are part of that community, you know? And, but what we're going to be interested in is obviously still is a pretty private setting, spacious home, and a great yard, so that kids can play, you know? So, the siting of the group homes will, will all be dependent on, you know, again, the area that is asking us to serve the child. The licensing for group homes, it's technically licensed under the Department of Early Education and Care, DEC, although it is first approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, because it's a residential educational program. It's an extension of their educational day.
We're not meeting until September after this meeting, at the beginning of the month. So, is that enough, give you enough time if we meet in the beginning? Just, I think we need to have some due diligence, maybe? I don't know, any, like, did you speak to, like, was our special ed director, was she involved in any discussions? Did you speak to Chief McNamara, just to get their opinion?
I spoke to our deputy superintendent just to see if we had any other programs ever come forward, and we hadn't, but I didn't speak to those people. I know that we're always looking for more local special education opportunities and more of a day school. We were talking about day school, not so much residential. But I didn't speak to Chief McNamara.
But can I ask, you said that this was going to be just the day, not residential?
Right, this is just a day school.
To start, for now. Andover started as a day, and then went to residential.
At that time, though, in 1998, that, well, we weren't in Andover, we were in Woburn still. But that was pretty clear to us, that that was the direction in which the Department of Education needed us to move. Same thing was happening in 1998, there were quite a few children who were without placement. I will tell you, that's not our intention for this site. This is strictly a day, day site. If we, you know, if we go at the same rate in which we filled our Woburn and then our Andover and Lawrence locations, most of those slots will be taken up probably in the first year and a half to two years. And that's just going on how our, our rate of admissions went for the opening site, so. It's that old, if you build it, they will come. That's historically what we, what we've seen. And we know that from our active waiting list and inquiries from families.
Any other discussion? Anything else from folks?
No, I just, I think it's a good program. I, I feel like it's a, there's a need for it.
Yeah, I don't know if we are comfortable with talking and voting on it and approving it tonight, or do we have to have more due diligence just to get other opinions? We didn't even talk to anybody within the district other than ourselves, and I feel like I don't know enough about anything with special ed. You know what I mean? Like, I don't feel like I know, I mean, it's up to you guys, I'm, but maybe just talking to folks and understanding what, how this would impact or benefit from the special ed director would have been, like, that'd be a deal, and maybe Chief McNamara, just any input on if there was potential down the road expansion into residential, like, how they could support that? I don't know, I don't know. I'm just asking, but I don't know. Like, I don't know, maybe I'm just overthinking it.
The only, the potential advantage is our transportation and being able to, future students would be able to be placed in a closer environment, and certainly, parents would have an option if they wanted to change, but more for future, future placements.
I don't know.
That's all.
I don't know. I'm not.
I'm okay with going forward with it, but it's up to the board.
Yeah, I'm not married to anything, but I also think there should be due diligence and understanding, since we've never approved anything like this.
I have a question. So, just to confirm, if you were to go and do a residential program, is it possible that it's not in Stoughton, and then you do it in other towns as well as, like, can it be separate towns?
Right, exactly. If there was a need for residential services, it could be, you know, in the town of Randolph, or it could be in the town of, you know, Avon, or, you know, Canton. So, it would really depend on, again, where the, who the children are that would need that service, and we, again, don't want to locate too far from parents either. You know, again, if we were to go into a residential environment, parents have to be a partner of that. We don't want the kids to stay there for a long time, so that, that's why we would look at appropriately cited locations. But I, I can tell you, that is really not, I, I know that's what we serve, currently a very small percentage, that is not what we're looking at doing right now. You know, that's just not part of our plan.
The other question I have is, with this approval, is there any contractual obligations are we aware of?
We wouldn't be required to send students there or anything like that, no. It would be an option, just like all the other special education options that we have.
Part of the requirement for having school committee approval is through the Department of Education, because they want to make sure that we have talked to the local town that we're looking to move into and really explain, you know, what we're doing. But other than that, there's no, you're not, there's no obligation, you know, on Stoughton's part to send kids, or, you know? So, we just are really seeking approval in, in terms of the process of siting at that particular location, and want to make sure that you know who we are and who we could serve. We'd like to be partners as well in the towns that we do. Eventually, we'll be, you know, trying to access local businesses, have students who will age into vocational employment and training, and so, we are job coaching, trying to cultivate jobs in the local community with them. So, and we also do an enormous amount of reciprocal teacher training, so if there are more specialized trainings, that there are teachers in this district that would, would like to, we offer free trainings all the time, and in turn, sometimes we get invited out for specialized trainings as well in the district. So, really look at as a partnership being in that location.
I don't know, I'm not, when they, it's a decision this big, I feel like I need to get other people's opinions. I'm not comfortable with approving something and just saying, "It sounds good, I'm going to approve it."
I think we need some more due diligence, but I'm just concerned with regards to the impact of your dates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're, you know, like, we feel for that, but also, I feel like there should be more due diligence done on the district's behalf.
Sure.
I don't know what the track record with Melmark, Mac is, like, I don't know anything about it, I was hoping that we would have more information.
Okay.
Just on how the district feels, and talking to some of the key stakeholders within the district to get their opinions on how, I mean, I don't know, am I being?
No, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think I, I see where you're coming from, Sandra. I also think, it sounds like there's a lot of benefits to Stoughton, to the surrounding communities, and when I'm thinking about potential challenges, I, I wonder about, like, how the school might interact with, like, other town departments, like, if there's an emergency or something like that. But I think that that's stuff that we can, those are things that we can kind of address as the process goes on. I don't, and allow the process to move forward in terms of, like, building so that they can get underway with opening for, for May, 2023. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know, like, me saying yes, I'm not comfortable with voting yes right now, because I don't even know, I think it's a great program, I think it's wonderful, but I think we should have opinions of the people, the key stakeholders within the town. This is a big vote, and I would hate for something in the town to happen or occur at any point in time, and I voted yeah without asking key stakeholders for their input on approving a big program and building within the district. I just feel like we're only five people, and there's other people that maybe have opinions, and we can probably reach out to different folks. I mean, we've, we've done a lot more diligence on smaller things, so.
Would you, can you reach out to the Andover and Lawrence and see if the town?
Right. How that, yeah. The Lawrence site was obviously cited a little differently, because it was under receivership at, at the time. But obviously, it was now Commissioner Jeff Riley, who was our point person there as well. So, he was, he, he's a very good resource in, in discussing this. I don't know if it would make sense for you to also potentially reach out to our licenser at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, since we certainly have not experienced any issues. It's been a pretty straightforward process, working with the school committee and gaining approval for it, partly because it, it is really about locating in the town and creating that partnership. But I don't know if that would be helpful for you in terms of part of your due diligence process, and I'm glad to email that contact.
Yeah, I just saw in the letter from Lawrence that they said they received the current curriculum and licensing report from, so I was like, they got some information?
I did send that. I sent the licensing report with the letter. Yes. And I am pleased to say, 100% achieved every criterion, and we received high commendations for the services that were provided. We also have a very high family satisfaction rating, about 99.8%, I think, of our families rated us in terms of delivering what we said we were delivering, kids making progress. I will say on an annual basis, about, I think it was 95% of our children achieve over 85 or 90% of their IEP objectives and goals each year. So, that is our commitment to making sure that the children can get the level of exceptional educational services that they need to be successful, and obviously, transition into adulthood ultimately. That's the goal.
I think it's a great program, so.
Yeah, me too.
Kudos, yeah. Thank you.
I don't know, I'll leave it up to you guys. But again, I just think we've made less of a decision, and we've had more information from the district to help us make a decision, or just to understand so that the public could hear more around why it would, you know, how it would impact us, but.
Is the August deadline a hard deadline? Is it, was it?
In order to be able to open in May. And I just wanted to, from a fiscal end, there is no fiscal ramifications in terms of the district, you know, the only, if there was a financial commitment, it would only be because there was a referral on the table through the district. So, at this point, there's no, there's no financial commitment from Stoughton at all. The entire building and project is up to us to fundraise and, and, you know, fund and proceed with all that. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, partly because as you're doing a due diligence, I do think it's important for the community to know this has no impact on them financially, you know, in terms of tax allocations, things like that, so.
Is there anything as a conditional approval, based on the due diligence?
So, here's a deal. You want to open in May, but if you don't have an approval in a month or two, it just pushes it back a couple months. Is there a significant reason the May date is there?
Partly because we're, you know, starting to, we have to start a lease, and so, you have to.
So, it's a lease, it's not a purchased property?
Right, it has to be a lease to start with. Are you thinking it's something that could be through your due diligence process that you're seeking? Do you think it's something that would still be decided by the end of August, or?
I don't, I don't, I, I don't know. I, I'm just one of the five, so I just don't feel like, I feel like there's more people that should have been contacted to just give, just even understanding from the two locations, like, you know, just the, you know, just knowing the Lawrence one was that receivership. I mean, there's this different reasons, but I just don't feel like I'm educated enough in this world of special education to be the one to say, I think it sounds amazing, but I know we have stakeholders in town that may have opinions and thoughts, and it would be nice to have that support, but I don't know.
See, I just, I, I was reading it and just knowing that there is a, a need for it in the South Shore, but I don't want to push anyone either, so, that's just, and I, I read the recommendations in the D E C. And I read the recommendations in the DESI things too. So that's, that's the only reason why I am thinking the way I am.
I support it. I just think rushing a vote, we just heard it first time, we've even heard about it, is presenting it tonight. I don't, and you didn't get any other feedback from folks within the district or the town just on, or from the other towns that are in it. I just think it's a pretty, I support it. I just don't want to vote on something and then hear from the public or from someone that they didn't, and this is why, or something happened. I didn't, I got, I opened my packet when I got here, it came in the mail today. Like, you know, so I just think that it's an important decision, not because it's something that is going to cost us money and it's not because it's something that the town of Stoughton is accountable for. It's because I don't know the impact to the Stoughton community. And, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't know. And I would love for the special ed director to have had some type of feedback on it as well to us, and we didn't get that. So I just think there's some pieces when we make decisions. It's important to have key stakeholders that are, you know, involved. Just tell us, this is how they feel because the, there's an opportunity for expansion, whether it happens today or five years from now, whenever. We still just need people to, I don't know.
Is there, can we explore like a third way where we take the amount of time that we need to conduct the due diligence, contact folks, get in touch, and then we meet again? Our next meeting day is TBD. So like, I know that the idea was to not meet again until the fall, but this feels like something that we could meet sooner and not hold you all up too much.
We can see, but a lease is a lease, right? So it's not gonna, a month isn't gonna hurt your lease, right? Did you lease it already?
Yeah, the lease has been signed.
And how long have you, when are you in the lease?
Oh, you mean when it?
When did you guys start your lease?
Uh, just last month or?
What month are we in, June? The month of June.
The month of June, so you're already in the lease.
In order to be able to lock that property down, yeah.
So you have the lease, so you have it for a year? Is that what the agreement is?
Yeah, it's contingent on a couple of things, but yes.
Okay, so, so you have the lease with some contingencies and you're waiting for, you know, us to, so you're working on that piece of the lease still. So once you guys start your construction, construction or whatever you're going to do to it, you're just going to open. It is a, not 365, 24/7 facility, but it will be close to 365 because you have a couple of weeks off. So it doesn't matter when you guys start because those students are getting serviced today, is that correct?
No, there'll be new students.
So it's going to be all new enrollment? Nobody's moving from the North Shore to come back this way?
No, not for students, no.
Yeah.
No. No, it's all new enrollment. It's enrollment that we've already, you know, there's already students who, parents have toured our existing facility, but they're from the South Shore. And so it was district refer, and we said if you guys can wait till May, that, that would be a placement option for them, you know. So we do have some, you know, parents in districts already who are looking forward to it.
So we can look to see if we can have a meeting in August to do it, but we need to do our due diligence. That's, in my opinion, what it is. But I just think without having any, it's just, it's odd to me that this is a big thing to bring forward, to add to the community, but we didn't ask anybody, you know. We don't have any, I don't know. I just feel like it's, we're five people, but we're not like in that.
I'll get the information, absolutely.
I don't know, and you guys can all jump in. I don't know, like, that's just my opinion, I don't know.
I'm in agreement, Mr. to do diligence.
I would like to just, you know, learn a little bit more about the current sites, just for, just to see what the school looks like. I mean, I'm kind of more of a visual person, I kind of want to, you know, look at images. I, I looked up the site over on Technology Center Drive and tried to kind of pitch it there, but just to, it would be nice to kind of compare it to the current locations, just to get a sense of it and what it would look like for that area in the community.
Is there a scenario where we meet in July as opposed to August?
Um, no. Katie is away in Maine, I'm away, and that's why we weren't meeting all summer.
Yeah, that makes sense if scheduling is not gonna.
We can meet in August, though. They need to start in August, so we can do that and give that. And they're still working out their lease, it sounds like, so we can.
Yep, okay.
So you need to start by August, right? That's when you guys are hoping?
Yeah.
So that's what we, I think we can give you, but I think that we need to, people that are listening, there might be feedback or questions in the community. There might be, there just has to be a little more outreach, I think.
Can I ask you a question? What's that process for the community feedback that you're typically looking for? How do you usually do that?
We'll figure it out. We're, we're going to ask Dr. Rab to run with that, so it'll be whatever process he has. He's going to contact the locations that the existing locations are, speak to the director of special ed, and I believe it was Chief McNamara, right? Just to get input from town resources and all that. I think it's important, all the key stakeholders, so.
Is there anything you need from me for those next steps?
If you can leave that stuff, that'd be awesome.
I'm going to leave you just, if you know how to read this. Good for you because it takes me a few. This is just a rendering of what the proposed property, how, how the classrooms and all that would be formed. And, and you'll see this playground, there's gym, this cafeteria. So you'll see how that works out. And then I'm just going to leave you just a little bit more on who we are in here and just a couple of brochures, so.
Do you mind soft copy of any of that? So if anybody asks for it, we can share it, or we can even put it with the minutes or, you know, publish it online just so people can see.
Yep.
I guess it's great, I mean, it's amazing, but I also think we'd like to have more support, people here supporting it.
So I'll leave that, and then am I to be in touch with, with you in terms of next steps? Or somebody gonna?
Can reach out, we'll reach out to you. Yeah, so I know you emailed Mary Shay, our, right? That's who? Yeah, so if you want to send them to her, that would be fantastic. And then we'll let you know, because I saw the letter and the wording on it, so that's a good start on what the draft would be. So that's good.
Great, okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, I appreciate everybody's time, thank you.
No, thank you for coming, and thank you for answering all those questions.
No problem, no problem. And again, I'm available if anything else comes up and you have questions.
Thank you.
Do you want this over here?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck tonight.
Bye bye.
Take care.
All right, Christine Secaw, if you want to come up, we have the year-end financial report.
In your packet, you got a memo just outlining where we are as of June 22nd. Gives you the balances by the, we've actually spent 98.7% of the budget as of June 22nd. And I broke it out by the DESI categories, which is administration, instructional, pupil services, operations and maintenance, insurances, and program with other districts, which is out-of-district tuitions. So the balance as of June 22nd was $669,451. So as we continue to finalize the purchase orders, then the closeout, our intent is to prepay $650,000 out-of-district tuition and have no turnbacks.
Katie, did you hear that? Zero. It's wonderful. Zero turnbacks?
No turnbacks. So on the second page, I just gave a brief explanation of each of the categories, administration, instructional, pupil services, operations and maintenance, fixed charges, and programs with other school districts. So then also on this is the revolving accounts as of through May 31st, as we continue to close those out before we roll into the next year. I didn't know if you had any questions.
No, it's great.
Okay, thanks. So then the next piece of it is, I've asked for a transfer. Also in your packet was a memo asking for, there's three pages to it, actually. The first page just outlines what, what we're asking for. So if you go to the transfer request one, it actually shows you the different balances, same, same as what the memo said on the, on the closeout. So if you look, it's administration, there's $143,654. Instructional is just over $295,000. Pupil services is in the red by $627,000. That is due to out-of-district transportation for this year between pre-K. And we've had so many kids go out of district that we've had to go beyond North River, other vendors, in order to transport these kids. And then operations, maintenance, we've seen some savings. Insurance, that the biggest one there is the unemployment. And then programs with other districts, we see some savings there because there was prepaid's last year as well. So what we're asking for is to, in order to cover the deficit in the 621-064, we're asking to move money out of administration, instructional, operations and maintenance, the insurance category, and programs with other districts. And that will still leave us, we will have no turnbacks and be able to pay $650,000 in prepaid tuition.
Wow. That's a big amount for the out-of-district difference in the budgeting, what, in that account?
Yeah, it's that. It's also we were able to buy some athletic equipment and supplies that we haven't been able to buy. And there's been some chargebacks to food service. If you look at the second page, it gives you the detail of the actual functions that are within these categories. If they start with a one, it's the 1,000s, the two's all the way down.
Does anybody have any questions, anything? So the process is we have to vote on moving between accounts.
I was just trying to figure out how to make that motion, too.
So, because we had originally, in the budget as approved, we had them in certain accounts. And because these are like interdepartmental transfers, we have to approve an interdepartmental transfer between the accounts. So that's what the ask is.
So could I do a motion to accept the transfer request as printed?
Yeah, this is confusing. Because usually we get, we would ask, we got it in a table, this account to this account, this account, this account. So hold on a second. Yeah, I know what you're saying now.
So I could just give this whole thing to Nicole and she could write it into, oh, she's got it, never mind.
I would say, yeah, the transfer request dated.
Dated June 28th, 2022?
Yeah, between accounts, 1,000 to 2,000, 3,000 to 5,000. Is that what it is? I don't know. I would say, yeah.
You do have, you have this?
Well, we have it in the other side, but.
Which is the short version, and then this is the detailed version.
Do we have the line by line?
But we don't have the line items.
The line.
How like you have the 100, the 1,000?
Yeah, I do have the line items, yep.
So.
That wasn't in your packet, but I was trying to make it simple.
You don't have the from to the to, I think, is what it is. Is that what it is?
Well, what it is, is this page here, it says from this DESI category to this DESI category.
Hold on, to.
We're requesting a transfer. She's got it all written down here, so that's why I was like, if I could say as printed and.
So the first category, the first column shows you the balance in those categories, those broad categories of the 1,000s through the 9,000s. And then the second one says from this DESI category to this DESI, to the pupil services. So you're basically moving from these large accounts, most of it is going into.
No, we get that. It's just to make a motion. It's not clear to say from this account to that account. We're trying to read it because in the beginning it says, we're requesting a transfer $143,000 from DESI category of administration 1,000 to transfer 270 from DESI category instructional services 2,000. Two, the first one doesn't say where to.
So what if I, if I did, um?
Oh, I see, they're all, all the transfers are going to one account, so they're transferring.
There it is.
Okay.
Good, okay.
Okay, so what's happening is you're transferring from these DESI categories, the 146, the 276.
Where is this?
Yeah, the best.
The 87,000.
They're going to 3,000. So if you say category.
All right, so if I do the motion to transfer.
To this, yeah.
The, do you want me to just do like the?
Account numbers.
Account.
You could read this, too.
I'm going to read the, please find. We're requesting transfer $143,654 from the DESI category of administration. Do I do the?
Account, yeah, 1,000.
To transfer 276, 276, 98 from DESI category instructional services to transfer 87,235 from DESI category operations and maintenance and transfer 58,072 from DESI category.
Insurance.
Insurance and transfer 61,305 from DESI programs with other districts tuitions for the total of 627,640 to.
Pupil services.
To cover deficit in pupil services due to increase in special education transfer for PK services and out-of-district transportation.
It's a tongue twister.
Please let me know if you have any questions.
No, don't, don't put that in there. Yeah, that's not the, so that was the motion to transfer.
Want me to say it again?
No. I couldn't follow it, and I was reading it. Second, okay, let's be seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, in the future, you know, it'd be helpful is if the transfer is, just break it out from this, just break out this, what's it called? Account number to this account number.
Okay.
And just name the account number and say the amount and just back and forth. So when we read the motion, we can say.
Okay, I got you.
From 1,000 to 2,000.
So when I give you this, I'll have it, each one of these.
Correct.
Two from, two from, two from.
It will help a little more, and then we can.
Thank you, that's great feedback, thanks.
Sorry, thanks.
No problem. It's good feedback, thank you.
Yeah, totally.
So are we making any deposits to the special education stabilization fund this year?
No, we weren't planning on it. The prepay and the tuitions will help.
Okay, and this is like, this is sort of the process that we would use moving forward to do that? Thank you.
No.
Well, not for special education tuition.
This isn't the process. This is the process to, good question. This is the process to clean up the books at the year end and make sure that anything that cost, which sounds like special education costed more than what we had budgeted for unforeseen circumstances. So we had to transition in the spring and say, stop spending here and transition those funds to cover that. We have to approve because when we approved the budget last year, we approved line 1,000 for this amount, line 3,000 for this, and we're just approved to move those out of those into that other account. The special ed stabilization accounts is separate vote of the school committee that if we feel at the end of the year there may be turnbacks, that if there's a percentage of that based on the recommendation of the business manager and the superintendent, we would move that.
Okay.
So it's two different things.
Okay, so it's.
We have no turnbacks, so we're not moving anything in.
Okay, so if it had cost less than expected as opposed to more than expected?
We would have turnbacks.
Could you have a turnback?
Thank you.
We actually did a lot in last year, so it's not good, I think.
That was a good question. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. Good feedback, though, I'll make it a little simpler next time.
Yeah, thanks.
No problem.
Okay, so we did the transfer approval, and then we have the RICO photocopy of contract. Was that you as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, it was in your packet, a copy of the actual contract. So I'll just touch on a few things. First of all, the budget amount was 132,000, and this contract's 127,970. So Joyce and Ryan met with RICO. We currently have RICO machines. And what they were able to do is look, analyze all the current machines in the district, meaning that how many copy, how many copies they made, et cetera. So it, to be, to be, and once they analyzed that, it was determined that some of the bigger machines could be smaller so that would save the district money. So they replaced all the machines. Some are a little bit lower than what they were for, before, based on the copies. And then we were able to get a new machine for the new registration office that's going to be here.
Oh, that's cool.
And it still came in under what was budgeted. So RICO has been a great partner, they're very responsibly responsive. When we call them, they come right out and take, service the machines, you know. When we call them, they come right out and take, service the machines, you know, you don't want to be a day without having a machine in your building. Makes it a little difficult.
And that, and the contract was negotiated by Ms. Housany, and who else?
Um, Ryan, Ryan McGee.
Okay, Mr. Housany.
I mean, I was in on, in on some of it, I just told them they had to be under budget.
That's our business manager.
And they did it.
Good for you, that's fantastic, good job on everybody.
And the other thing is, they've added what they call, what is it called, price, uh, what's it called, uh, price cut? Paper cut, sorry, I thought it was price cut, paper cut. So what that is, is a security thing, it's in all the other buildings right now, but it's not here in administration. So what you do is you send your print job to the copy machine, and you need to use your badge, so we can keep track of who's making copies. And not only that, if there's stuff that's, you know...
Sensitive.
Confidential or sensitive to anyone, you're not running to the machine like we do now.
You just put a code into, or you scan your thing, and it'll print what you have.
Your card, and it comes right up. And if you send a print job to the machine and you don't get it for 24 hours, it disappears, so we're not wasting paper or ink.
You're not messing around, huh? Oh, very cool.
I'm hoping that you guys will let us sign the contract, or talk about the contract.
Okay, so we need to, Dr. R, we need to vote on approving, what, can you just?
Sure, so vote to approve the three-year renewal for the RICO photocopier contract.
Three-year renewal. Well, he can't make the motion.
I'll make it.
So.
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Yeah, go ahead, you seconded it, Fabian? All right, so, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, it was very lively. Okay, the ratification of the cafeteria's workers' local 1445 UFCW contract, and that, Katie?
Yes, we had a great discussion with the food workers, they're very nice to work with. The major changes in this is that we are going to have them starting at minimum wage, which is a no-brainer. I'm trying to see what else we... And then everything in the red is changes, oh, here we go, this big red. So bereavement, we just changed it to be the same as the paras. I'm just looking at the big ones, if you have any questions, please let me know. For the sick days, we just gave them a few extra sick days, but they cannot be carried over, accumulated, as of right now, so that's great.
And then the school delayed opening, that was the last one, I think, you had, right?
So the school delayed open, we have left it to the director of food services at their discretion, so, but they have the option of doing, manager's choice, so be it. And pandemic regulations is just how, you know, we follow DESI.
We do follow DESI guidelines, we don't make our own in the contracts, got you? Awesome, good job.
And then the pay, the pay scale is in the back, but it's like, like we said, we just upped, yeah.
Good for you guys.
They were happy.
Well, we appreciate them, and we appreciate that you guys were able to close it before, you know, we had this meeting.
So I'd like to make a motion to ratify the cafeteria workers' local 1445 UFCW contract.
Second. Oh, all in favor, I seconded it, and then I waited for someone to say something. All in favor, aye. That was the highest aye I've ever heard down that end.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I never second, I always wait.
I know, you never second.
I know.
You just keep hanging.
I always wait for you guys. I did it, though, I seconded your thing, for the first time.
But I just want to say, thank you, too, that they were very appreciative, grateful, and I really, really liked the negotiations with them.
Yeah, I had the same experience with the other union.
Custodians.
Custodians, maintenance, and technology folks, it was great pleasure working with them, and being able to close that out, doing a similar type contract as you guys did too, so it's nice to see. Okay, old business, policy, JF School Admissions, Dr. Ab, this was one that we tabled as you were at the last meeting, and we were trying to figure out the wording around that.
I have a suggestion, Mrs. Groppi members of the community, the committee, we wanted to be clear that students must attend the elementary school in which their address is assigned, but there are special education situations where students need to go to an elementary school where the program is housed. So I, I'm making a suggestion that we say students enrolled in district-approved programs, rather than call out special education as a separate thing, simply say district-approved programs attend the elementary school where the program is located. And so that allows for a carve-out for those students that need to go to those programs where the program is housed.
Previously, you had the word with no exceptions, and this is replacing that, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, that makes more sense to me.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept JF School Administra, Admissions.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Lindsay. Okay, okay. So that's how to go to the MASC, I guess, on that. The fiscal year '23 budget, did I skip something? Oh, I wrote through it, sorry, non-resident, thank you, thank you. Non-resident employee program, I crossed it out when I circled that.
So fast.
I know, it's like... So this was on the agenda previously, the question that was raised was at the bottom, it had said, I think...
K through five.
K through five or something to those words, and I don't know if it was a typo or whatever, but...
I, I misunderstood, I expanded it to previous pre-K to 12, so this way it's open to all families.
Okay, that makes more sense. That was what historically it was, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And history is on the second page, we don't have too many, too many families that enroll, but those that do appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-resident employee benefit program.
Make me do it, I'll second it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's like two in and one, I can't do both, I can't second and do the other part. Putting a lot of pressure on me. Okay, now we'll get to the FY '23 budget, additional Chapter 70 funding update, and then the ESAR grant update is after that, so I'll just hand it over to you guys.
Thank you, absolutely appreciate that. So beginning with the, is it additional Chapter 70 is first, let me just grab that.
Can I just, we don't have anything in our packets on that?
Okay. I have copies of the ESAR, I didn't have copies of this.
Okay.
But I can, I can make them real quick, and we can start.
Was that in the email?
Yes, these were emailed to everybody, but not, not in a hard copy, so I have the hard copy here.
Yeah, we can't. Okay, so you want to give us the update?
Sure, I can speak through it, and then speak to, to where we're at with the additional Chapter 70 funding. So we're anticipating an additional $4 million in extra Chapter 70 money, as we've talked about. And right now, in order to appropriate that money, we need to go to a special town meeting in the fall. And so I've been giving a lot of thought and talking to stakeholders in the, in the district, talking to the principals, and trying to figure out what would be appropriate uses for those funds based on the history. And I've also spoken to the school committee, and we've gotten some feedback. And so what is really great, if we do get this money, and right now there's every indication that we're going to get it, is we'd be able to offer free transportation, we'd be able to offer free athletics, free music, these are all things on the table, they're not, we don't have to decide tonight, but it's just, these are the kinds of things that we'd be able to do.
These are all from the list that Dr. Rizzi had previously, to be clear, right? This was, we were asked years ago if we were to get full-service-like level funding, is this the stuff from that list?
Some of these things are from that list, and some of these things are from my own research this year, both.
Okay.
As well as looking at some of the things that we're currently funding from ESAR that we may or may not want to continue in the future. And so that's one of the things that I wanted to put out there. So that, some of these lists are from Dr. Rizzi's original list, and some of them are my own thoughts.
No, that's fine, we're just used to the, yeah, I'm just writing, go ahead.
Sure, and I, I mean, we can easily make copies, or I can make sure the committee has these. The other thing we can do is institute a middle school athletic program, which we haven't had. Also, and I do want to talk a little bit later, using ESAR funds, about making sure we maintain and reduce class size, make sure we keep class size low as we get more and more enrollment. Talk about a BCBA, we have two BCBAs on staff right now, would want to make sure that we can maintain those, they work with our special education students. Make sure we maintain reading at the, at the middle school, we want to look at elementary math and literacy specialists, make sure we have coaches at the high school and the middle school. We also want to make sure we maintain all of our summer programming, so the summer program I mentioned earlier, much of that right now is funded through ESAR, and so down the road with, with these funding, we can make sure we maintain it going forward. The central registration office is new, so that is something that we would, we could continue on here. And then we've also talked about, perhaps down the road, looking at paraprofessionals and looking at different levels of paraprofessionals, and maybe we would want to include them in more full-time in kindergarten or first grade and second grade. So those are the kinds of things that we're talking about right now, but it all requires a vote of the school committee, and all requires approval, and for us ultimately go to special town meeting. And then to be able to also use those funds in the future to offset our budget, so that this way we're really reducing impact on the tax burden as well. So those are the, right now, that's where it's at, is the fiscal year ends for the state, and we start the new fiscal year, we'll know for certain that those funding is coming in, and then in the fall, special town meeting, we can, we can do more.
So we gave you feedback, you had reached out to the school committee, so I think we all gave you the feedback about, we wanted, Katie and I have been pushing for free busing for years, so that was a school committee item. And also the sports, I brought forward that we should waive all the sports fees, because we think it's important for all students to be able to participate, and a lot of families may not be able to afford that large amount, and we want them to be able to have those opportunities. The other thing we brought forward was the middle school athletic program, and wanting that, we find that as a priority as well, so that we can get the students at an earlier age, and they're able to start getting excited and involved in those programs, and that way our high school programs start to build and be stronger, because we're investing in the students at the middle age level and getting them, starting to compete with the other schools, male schools in the hock-a-mock as well. The, obviously, the paras and all that is important, we saw a difference when the principals came and presented to us at the last meeting and talked about the little changes we made with providing additional staff. We saw the difference in how the students are doing when it comes to small classroom size, and also with having additional help within the classrooms at the younger ages, which is wonderful. $4 million is a significant amount of money, so I do think that that's what we should be talking about, because it is great to know that we have an idea, but we do have a taxpayer burden that already exists, so it's important for us to talk about, we're not looking to the adjustment, and I think it's important for folks to know that there's a calculation that's done by the governor, and when he puts forward a budget, and he revised that calculation to take into account, to adjust, and essentially fix the calculation for communities that have a high-low income rate.
Exactly.
And when he fixed it, Stoughton, all of a sudden, was, there's a gap of $4 million. That's pretty significant, that should be highlighted, so people can understand really how essential it is for us to be able to not only fund the budget, but also how sad it is that we've been functioning, and it's wonderful, because we have been doing a great job, and that's been with prior superintendents managing the budget, doing a great job. But I also had provided, written, and writing to you that I don't feel comfortable going back and saying at town meeting, this $4 million, we're looking to spend all this, they're sending this into the district, and that's what they want. So I brought forward a recommendation.
Sure, I can speak to that.
Which was that we should be going to town meeting and let them know that we're fiscally responsible, we showed that with having zero turnbacks this year, but also with all these things that we're looking to add, because those are the list that we've given at town meeting, Katie, you and I know for years of the nice-to-haves, this is what would really change students and children's lives in this town, if we were able to give them these things within our budget. If we can go to town meeting and show them, then this is what we're going to be doing with the money that they gave us, I think it's important, but in addition to, I think we need to take into account that we closed a couple contracts, and we have increases for other contractual obligations next year, and that in the spring town meeting that would be after, it would be disingenuous for us to come and ask for an increase. So is there any research that you guys were able to do around not, you know, in the spring town meeting, coming forward and looking at the $4 million and how that will work for everything?
Absolutely, so we took a look, the list that I spoke about is about 2.7, 2.8 million, and so that would still leave us 1.3, it's about 4.2 million that we're getting in extra Chapter 70 funding, so that would leave us about 1.3 to 1.5 to put toward the next budget, which would allow us to not have to ask for more money from the town, we'd be able to split it up and have the, the Chapter 70 money as well, because it would cost, to keep our budget level for next year, would be about 1.3 to 1.5 million, and so the difference between the 2.7 and that would, would take care of those funding.
No, but keeping it level is one thing, but we also need to consistently improve, so, right, with every year, it's why we come back with a little more than level, and so in the money that's left, is that money taken into account that we obviously, like, need to improve, so it's not just, you know what I'm saying, like a level?
Well, I feel like we need, because we, there is, because of COVID.
Yeah.
Kind of stepped back, so I want to make sure that the kids are getting what they're, what they need, and if we can help them a little extra, knowing that, you know, the ESAR grant is not going to be here, it might not be here after, so, you know, those, all that, all those extra people that we have, they might have to go away, depending on where we are, so I wouldn't want to, like, go backwards on our budget, ever. I just want to make, I, I want to be able to take advantage of the extra money that we have to put those towards students, so that they can grow more. But, you know...
We have ESAR money, and we need to be able to spend that too, and that's millions, so...
Right, so use, use that.
I think if we had that in front of us, it would have helped us a little, so, so, wicked sorry, maybe you're already there, but I do think $4 million, I think people are hearing it for the first time, right now. I just, it's a lot to ask the taxes, like, while I know it's coming to the schools, you know what I mean, like, I just hope that we're diligent in how we're budgeting, and not just saying, ooh, we get this money, and it would be nice to have these extra people here, here, it's more what Katie's saying, what I'm trying to say, is it would be nice to budget this without, in the spring town meeting of the next year, coming in with any increase because of this additional funding, so we can level off that first year, in giving everybody what we need, and taking into account the ESAR stuff, and the programs we've brought in for students, making sure that we're able to fund that continuously, or roll it into this newly funded, right, piece?
Understood, and, and that's the plan, I apologize if I wasn't clear, but the plan is to, is to try to make sure that we're using this money for both of those purposes, to make sure that we're deciding what we want to continue for ESAR, and make sure we move that forward, but also looking at the needs that we have as a district, and making sure that we're, we're serving those populations as well.
So will we get like a breakdown of all of that at some point, when how that stuff would transfer between, like?
Yes. Yeah, I have it, I have it here, I can, I can send it to the committee, and it shows exactly what's coming from ESAR and what is new, and I, and I have that right here.
And that takes into account the social, emotional help and stuff that's in there?
Yes, that's part of it, yeah, and when you see the triennial plan in September, there'll also be a crosswalk to that as well, so we'll, we'll be working on all of that, so...
So what would be the next step, then, it's, you guys, we need to, I think we need more detail, that's another thing, we need more information in detail, because we can't support anything or vote on anything to support anything until we know exactly what it is, because we do have an obligation to the taxpayers to be able to look at what that is, and is it reasonable or not, and then we need an article that would need to be written, and that article where Christine, you would come into play, is, needs to be written, and it would need to be something that would bring to the special town meeting, but you need to figure out what that amount is, and we need to be able to articulate what we're offering, not in the article, but I think we just need more information on that.
Absolutely.
But we do need an article as well, and then the school committee would vote on the article that would go forward to town meeting, right, Katie?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's how the process would be.
Perfect, so we can get that, I can get that detail absolutely to the committee.
So then I think that what we would need to also do, for transparent... So then I think that what we would need to also do, for transparency purposes, in every school committee meeting going forward, is we would need an update on this.
Okay.
Because of the significance, right?
I feel like that should go in the minutes, too. So that the public can see it. And then, you know, people could reach out if they need.
Yeah. I mean, it's a big thing. And it's hard, because we're not seeing it. So it's like, sorry, like.
Understood.
I'd like to just continue to share that. And I think it's a good thing, because if we start to talk about it, too, maybe families will be able to breathe a little more, knowing that there's potential for their students to have free busing. For, you know, sports programs, it's expensive.
There's a lot of stuff that is, there is great stuff on that.
Fine arts department as well, like being able to, right, with fees.
Eliminate the fees.
Yeah, limit all that stuff. So I think that's significant, and I think it makes a lot of people breathe a little easier, knowing that could be coming down the pipeline.
Absolutely.
So maybe a little more transparency for us. What? What? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was like, wait a minute, what'd you say?
We can absolutely attach this list to the minutes and then be clear, and then everybody has it.
So just for the school committee, I'm only explaining everything in detail because of the newer members, I want you guys to know. So when we have something like this in the past with Chapter 70, if we receive funds and it, we project every year what we think it's going to come in with a certain percentage increase, and that's what we, it's a guesstimate. And then what actually comes in is a difference, and usually it comes in higher. And what we do is we put forward a article at town meeting, in the special town meeting, and ask for that difference of what came in versus what we guesstimated. And then we take those funds, and then we're able to apply it to something else. So that's why, there's nothing to vote on this evening. This is a good time to start talking, but it's an article we would need them to draft starting in September and start talking about it, right?
Yeah. We'll keep it as a standing item, too.
Does that make sense, guys? Cool? Awesome.
I apologize to the chair. I do have a handout for the ESAR, though.
Oh, okay.
I do have the detail on the ESAR that I recognize that.
Do you want to just pass it to her, and we can all take them? It's okay.
They didn't make it into the packet, so I do have that detail for everybody.
And Dr. Rab, I know there was, like, some feedback, too, regarding lunch. Lunch is it free? You haven't mentioned anything.
I haven't, because it's not confirmed, but we've heard both from federal and state. Federal, right now, there's a bill in Congress to keep lunch free for next year, and there's a lot of confidence that that's going to get passed, and so that would make it easy. At the state level, it's in the conference committee. The state House of Representatives supported it in their budget. The Senate didn't. And so right now, it's in the conference committee, and they're talking about it right now and trying to figure that out. So more than likely, the federal government is going to take care of it, and so it won't even be an issue at the state level. In the next couple of days, as the fiscal year ends, we should hear more about that. But there's a lot of confidence at the federal level that they're going to extend it for another year.
Okay. So I had asked for you to provide the school committee with details on the ESAR funding. We voted on the ESAR funding last year, and I guess I wanted this to be more of a recon, to actually know that what we voted on was actually being implemented.
Okay.
This is a lot.
Oh, yeah.
So what I did was, and I can certainly go from the original, I have the original items that were voted last year, all the original things that were voted, and I can certainly do a crosswalk between the two. But I wanted to show the committee exactly the way the funding has been spent this year for the three ESAR grant fundings, because there are deadlines in terms of how much we have to spend. This is July 1 to June 16. So I wanted to give the committee an understanding of how much ESAR funding we have spent so far, and then I had a request of the committee for ESAR funding over the summertime. But just to go over it, we have to spend each of these funds completely over the next three years. ESAR I money needs to be completely expended by June 30. ESAR II by June 30 of next year, 2023, and ESAR III by June 30 of 2024. So we're on track to, this is as of June 16, and even though you'll see this little bit of funding left, we're on track to spend the entire allocation of the ESAR I by the end of the month. We've spent about half of the ESAR II allocation this year, and you can look at the list of the types of things that we've spent the ESAR II money on, and that would be continued into next year. A big part of it is our summer programming and all of the after-school programming that's done during the school year, as well as some of the positions that the school committee approved. The school committee approved the ALC teacher and aide using ESAR funding. That would continue for next year using ESAR funding. It did continue one kindergarten teacher on ESAR funding. We put another teacher in the budget as part of the '23 budget. There's an elementary math specialist and the bright program teacher at the high school. Those were ESAR funds approved by the school committee that we've continued on.
Why do we even have nurses on ESAR funding?
Those were the nurses that were part of ESAR III funding to help out during COVID. And so we hired extra nurses when we were in the depth of COVID.
After this year, it's over. Those are done.
They don't need to be continued.
Oh, so that's a big change.
It was, that'll be a big change and something that we'll have to come forward with in terms of how we look at ESAR III. That's the big one that we haven't spent much of. Right now, of ESAR III, it's a large grant, and we've only spent maybe 12% of it, 13% of it. So we have a lot of the ESAR III funding left over. And even though much of it was designated last year, there have been changes. And my plan was to come forward to the committee in September, and again, with another update to say this is what we've spent, this is what we're planning for FY '23, so that we can sort of subtract FY '23 and then decide what else we want to spend the additional funding on. I wanted to give the committee kind of a first round of where we were at with ESAR, so that the committee was aware of the amount of money that's been supporting us all the way around, and with the line item detail, so that you have that detail.
This is amazing, because this is the level of detail that we've been asking for for a while. So I really appreciate that you did this, you as well. This is like.
I have to give Christine and her team credit.
Was it? Okay.
I didn't do it myself.
It was Rose?
I can't take full credit. I made the cover page.
So this is wonderful. The one last, this is wonderful. So the only question is, we voted on, we voted on the ESAR plan last year, and it was like in a table format, and it was for this, this, and this. Is there a way just to align the sections? It says, like, stipend, and then it tells you what the program is, but is there a way for it to be checked off or something on what we actually approved in last year versus what was added during the year, so that we can really see, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, you're talking about.
Yeah, not as a negative, but more of, so we know, because I think we need to start tracking that a little better and be a little more cognizant of what we're doing, because in three years, it can get hard to track, you know?
Absolutely. I could certainly do that, because I have the three original spreadsheets.
Go ahead, Katie.
No, I was just agreeing with you, because, you know, not that we want anything to end, but if the ESAR grant does end, you kind of have to look to see which ones that we can absorb into our budget and which ones have to go.
And those are decisions that.
And those will be hard decisions. So the more information we have, the better off we.
Because you can maybe plateau it if you know, and the, you know what I mean, slow it down if need be, if it's something that we've added, because it's a nice to, because obviously, and with ESAR, for everybody to know, it's stuff that needs to be, very extensive paperwork that needs to be submitted to the state, and it needs to be within certain guidelines on what you spend it on, and that's why this grant is for this, and it doesn't just cover the budget that we have. It's certain things that we had to write a whole program on, on what it would cover, and then it'll, to help students, especially after the pandemic.
I did have one request to the committee of using ESAR funding, because we do have available funds in ESAR III, and I mentioned to the committee two meetings ago that I've been tracking our enrollment very closely. And there, right now, at the Wilkins, we have 69 kindergarteners enrolled for three sections. If we let that alone, that would be 23 students in a class, and they typically have more students come in over the summer. So that's why I was talking to the principal. At the DAW, we have 68 students for three sections, which would be 20, you know, 22 and 23. And at the South, we're up to 43 students with two sections. So I do have one open position due to attrition that I can stick into one of those, but I would like the committee to give me authorization to use temporary ESAR funding for up to two kindergarten positions. If this becomes fruition and becomes the truth over the next month, we're still checking residency, we're still making sure that these are all, you know, actual students who are going to enroll. But where we're meeting now at the end of June, I would like to have the latitude to be able to hire two additional kindergarten teachers, if necessary.
Okay.
Using the ESAR funding.
So we would need a motion from someone to, like we did with the ESAR.
I'll make a motion to.
Temporarily hire, hire.
Hire two extra kindergarten teachers, if.
If.
If maybe.
Extra FTEs for kindergarten, two extra FTEs, period, under ESAR III.
That'd be great.
On, under the ESAR III grant, and it's not guaranteed that it would be in the budget, rolled into the budget.
Perfect.
That's how we did it the last time, I think, right, Nicole?
There's no guarantee.
No one ever talks to me in a meeting.
No guarantee that it would survive beyond us.
Yeah. The reason why I think we need to say, instead of kindergarten, is because next year, the section, they might have to roll with them.
Right.
True.
So it's why we probably don't want to say.
So whatever she said, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I just don't remember it. So you got it, Nicole?
Temporarily hire two extra FTEs under the ESAR III.
ESAR III, yep.
Yeah, take out the word temporarily. I think the motion would be to hire two FTEs under the ESAR III grant. With no guarantee that they would be rolled into the budget once the ESAR III grant is over.
Perfect.
That, we wrote the grant out, we wrote the thing the last week. It was much more money.
I do remember that one, too. I don't know what that was.
So that was just not a guaranteed, because we don't know what will happen.
Thank you for the flexibility.
Did you want to second that one?
Did you favor it? You did it?
I did, as I made you.
I'll second it.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor? Oh, yeah, sorry. Throws me off.
I know.
Aye. Trouble. So that's good. So that's great, especially small classroom sizes is extremely important.
Especially for kindergarten or something.
Yeah. Wow. That's a lot of students enrolling.
We have 275 kindergarteners enrolled right now. Last year, we had 300, and so we're pretty confident we're going to get more of them.
Yeah. Yeah, they, because there's bumps, what, over the summer.